Good afternoon and welcome to the November 21 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. Call this meeting to order. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have three trustees, I think, calling in. I would ask, Trustee Cross had another college event tonight. Trustee Lawson has a work conflict tonight. And Trustee Lindstrom is returning from Wichita where he's Chair of the Kansas Turnpike Authority. So if you're on the phone, would you identify? Lee, I see your name on the screen. Are you there? Angelina, are you there?
I am, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. David Lindstrom, are you there? So let the record show that Trustee Lawson is on the phone, and we expect that the others will call in. Lee, are you there now? His name pops up, but he doesn't. Are you there, Lee? Well, we'll see if he picks up. I'd like to welcome Alan Holquist tonight. He is our Council, Board Counsel in the absence of Tanya Wilson. And Alan will be joining our meetings for that purpose. Roll call and recognition of visitors, Ms. Leest.
This evening's visitors include Gloria Van Rees, Roberta Eveslage, Dick Carter, and Alan Holquist.
Thank you. Welcome. Appreciate you being here. Awards and recognitions.
Dr. Cook, we have no awards or recognitions tonight.
Okay, thank you. The open forum is the next item on the agenda. It's a section of the Board Agenda, a time for members of the community to provide comments to the Board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled Board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, and in that instance, the Chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each Board meeting prior to the open forum Agenda item. When addressing the Board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues, or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes, or are otherwise a subject of review by the college or Board. We have two registered speakers this evening. When you come to the podium, I'd ask you to state your name and your address, city and state. And the first is Beth Edmonds. Lee, have you joined us?
I am. It's Dave Lindstrom.
David's on, and let the record show that Lindstrom is there. Okay, go ahead. Thanks. Thanks, Beth.
Good evening. My name is Beth Edmonds. I live in Lawrence, Kansas. I am speaking to you tonight as President of the Faculty Senate at Johnson County Community College. As President of the Faculty Senate and Chair of the JCCC Mathematics Department, I work very closely with adjunct professors who teach a great many of our students. In my department, a typical fall semester fines up to 65% or more, well over 2,000 math students in classrooms taught by adjuncts. We, the full-time faculty, the administration, the Board of Trustees, and students, put well-earned faith in the expertise and professionalism of our adjunct colleagues. We must understand that taking good care of our students is synonymous with taking good care of our adjunct faculty, but more than that, it means listening to and learning from those faculty members. Please bear with me while I share and then bust the three most prevalent myths I hear about adjunct faculty for you. Myth number one: adjunct instructors are just here to collect a paycheck and go home. The Faculty Senate's Adjunct Affairs Committee would like me to assure you this generalization is not appropriate. Many adjunct faculty are very active on this campus in many capacities, including curriculum development, textbook selection, and mentoring. That is all in addition to the teaching work that they are paid to do. Myth number two: adjunct faculty are short timers here at JCCC. They could not be considered long-term employees. Their voice should not be taken into account when making policy or procedural decisions as they are transitory and not invested in the workings of the college. This could not be further from fact. In my own department, we have 28 adjunct faculty with more than 20 semesters of service. Of those, 12 have more than 50 semesters of service, and of those two have more than 100 semesters of service. If you're doing the math, which I am, greater than 100 semesters of service would translate to over 30 years. Adjunct professors from across campus return to JCCC semester after semester to do what they love. Perhaps more importantly, it would be wrong to exclude 65% of the teaching faculty of this college for meaningful, direct participation in the governance of the college. Myth number three: there are two types of student experiences in the academic branch: one, if you have a full-time instructor, and a completely different one, if you have a part-time instructor. This is much like the GTA system at a four-year institution. Again, this couldn't be further from the truth. Our adjunct faculty are not student employees, and many hold more advanced degrees or more work experience than their full-time colleagues. Furthermore, all our faculty are evaluated on a regular basis to ensure the quality of their teaching. As Chair of my department, I meet many, many students that are not my own. Students who have issues, or questions, or concerns come to my office. Students wanting help with the right math course enrollment come to see me, et cetera. I know for a fact that students do not perceive full-time or adjunct. They perceive professor. No matter who that professor is, they want them to be the best and the most knowledgeable teacher they've ever had. This is what we all want for our students. I was surprised to learn this week that this viewpoint of adjunct faculty is not as uncommon as I thought among full-time faculty. There are approximately 325 full-time faculty and over 700 part-time. In any vote, if all adjunct faculty vote and vote the same way, they would win. But I caution anyone from following this line of reasoning. The totality of academic thought and discourse is not about voting. It is about discussion and collaboration designed to do what is right and best for teaching and learning and for JCCC. To this end, I can put everyone's mind at ease. Full-time and part-time faculty have worked side by side for eight years on the JCCC Faculty Senate. Since we are not a faculty body charged with putting out fires or forced into quick reaction, we have the luxury of having deep discussions about issues with representative faculty from across campus, including adjunct faculty. We are the firewall that, when acknowledged and empowered, is intended to stop conflagrations before they begin. I'm proud to add that through the auspices of the JCCC Faculty Senate over the last few years, there has often been an adjunct faculty member on this Board's Collegial Steering Committee and in President's Objects Faculty Leadership Meetings. We have ushered important cross-divisional faculty initiatives into being and have done all this while utilizing a crucial one-professor-one-vote model. My previous two presentations to this Board have centered around shared governance and the ideas of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I'm happy to report that the DEI Task Force is moving forward with its good work on behalf of the entire JCCC community. In addition, the shared governance task forces that I mentioned in those previous presentations are working to develop models that will embody the ideals of shared governance and inclusion. They are unfortunately not there yet. With that said, what has become clear to me lately is that an aspect of inclusion that is overlooked in this process of DEI and shared governance is the inclusion of adjunct faculty. Without the inclusion of adjunct faculty in the same collaborative body as full-time faculty in essential conversations, JCCC cannot reach its shared governance goals. As I communicated to the full faculty of the college in an email this last week, any model that emerges from the current task force processes must meet or exceed the standards and capabilities that the Faculty Senate currently provides. We have yet to see any presentations or documentation that approaches the standards set by the Faculty Senate. Until we do, we intend to continue to represent the interests of all faculty at JCCC. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Appreciate your comments. Next is Irene Schmidt. Irene, please.
Good evening. I'm in, I live in Olathe, Kansas, and this is probably the first time I've ever been before the Board, although I have known several of you and had the opportunity to work with you in Collegial Steering and other undervenue, so I appreciate that. I also have just a couple things I want to read, so I don't want to take up too much of your time, so thank you for having me. I attended one of the academic faculty shared governance town halls today. Heard a lot of things. Not a lot of it was terribly surprising, as there's a lot of communication and dialogue that's happening right now. But what I would like to point out is that none of this dialogue would be happening without the work of the Faculty Senate. The reason, in my opinion, that the Higher Learning Commission has charged this college to be inclusive of adjuncts is because of the work that a few faculty put in to create a report based on the HLC feedback. And in that, we agreed a lot with what the HLC had to point out, that we have to increase communication, improve communication, be more efficient with communication. And we had to address shared governance at this college. So a couple things I would like to point out, that is something I would like to read for the record, is that without the work of the Faculty Senate members, okay, the HLC may not have brought this to our attention, to be inclusive of adjuncts. As far as I'm concerned, this is a tremendous accomplishment for the Faculty Senate that is often overlooked by a narrative that continues to question, what faculty need does Faculty Senate fulfill? Simply put, the need it fulfills is twofold. Number one, the Faculty Senate mission statement addresses that we need to pay attention to shared governance, academic freedom, and the like. This mission is ongoing. Number two, Faculty Senate principles align with our college value statements, which include collaboration and leadership. The Faculty Senate offers all faculty a collaborative venue, whether faculty want to collaborate with us or not. It is there. The seats are there. The welcome is there. It also promotes leadership opportunities for all, including adjuncts, and providing inclusion with equity in the form of equal voting. I myself was a beneficiary of that. I have been at this college for 22 years. I am a long-term adjunct, and in no way part-time nor temporary. I would accept part-time forever, but then that would be on a regular basis, not temporary. I served on the Faculty Senate Proposal Team in 2011 to 2013. I served on the Faculty Senate from 2013 to 2017. I served on Collegial Steering. I served on the COPS Committee. I served on a college readiness committee. You name it, I tried to be involved. I learned so much in my years and my time on the Senate, and that was not learning from other adjuncts. That was the collaborative environment of working with and hearing other full-time faculty members. I appreciate the fact that there has been a proposal for a new adjunct council. Prior to my work with the Faculty Senate, I was on an adjunct advisory council within CAO Marilyn Reinhardt. It existed roughly for about 10 years, from 1998 to 2008, before it was disbanded. I would consider that as an accommodation for adjuncts. I would consider the current proposal as an accommodation for adjuncts. But to remove adjuncts completely from a dialogue with their full-time faculty peers, I think, would be unwise. So to continue to say that Faculty Senate has no purpose is a conscious denial of its mission statement. I start to feel that it becomes a deliberate narrative that ignores the realities of the needs of faculty. So please help us. Please help us address the needs that we actually have. Thank you.
Irene, thank you. I will speak to that a little more in my Collegial Steering meeting, follow-up to both your comments and the comments of Beth Edmonds. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. That closes the open forum section. We now have Board reports, and the first is Student Senate. Mr. Persai, how are you tonight?
Mr. Chairman, may we take a technical timeout until we figure out where Trustee Cross is? He's emailing folks?
Yeah, I think that-
He styled the wrong number, and I'm emailing him-
She's taking care of it, I think.
Okay, very good.
The beeping is distracting, but I don't want the phone to distract from our meeting, so thank you. Sorry, Anke, go ahead.
No. I mean, thank you for your time, of course. Good evening, everyone. I'm Anke. I'm the student president at JCCC. I'm just here to give the Board a quick report on what we've been up to so far. At this time, our biggest event is, again, JCCC Gives, and we're well on our way to kind of have a successful event for that. We've had around 105 tags taken out for the nominees, and I think we've only got around 50 tags left in the office that people haven't already taken out. So those 50 tags will hopefully either get people to come in and help fulfill those, or we'll fundraise and fulfill those ourselves. We've raised around, I think, $400. Our major fundraisers are just on the horizon. We've got rates for veterans. We've partnered with a company that buys rates for veterans and puts them on their graves, and essentially, the proceeds, there's, I think, $5 extra of profit that they give back to this cause that we have. And so that's how, where one of the events that we're promoting is that. We've got also Trivia Night that's happening tomorrow for one of those fundraisers. We've got Penny Wars between all the other clubs around campus. That's been a fair amount of success. We've got a lot of donations, a lot of monies from that. We've also got Giving Tea, which is coming up. So those are some of our fundraisers, and hopefully, that should be able to fulfill our goal of around 3,000, maybe even go over. If we do have a surplus, that's all going to go towards the Basic Needs Coordinator and his office, the food pantry, to hopefully keep those things stocked up. Moving on from that, we've got, we had a couple of budget requests. Right now in our budget, we're actually way past the halfway point, which isn't a bad thing. This just shows that more clubs are more active around campus, and they're doing more things, traveling to better places, networking, doing all the important stuff that we expect clubs to do. So we're very happy with that, the level of activity that clubs have been doing around campus and the involvement that they've been showing. So recently, BSU, the Black Student Union, had a trip to League Summit, where black leaders from all around, I think, the country come together, and they kind of coach the leaders in these clubs on how to better manage their clubs, how to improve turnout, and all these important things. We also had the Hospitality Club. They're going to New York for a hospitality conference, especially with all the business leaders and everything in New York, to see what the industry is like at the highest level, so they can get some real workplace experience. That being said, those are the budget requests we've had. We've also had a couple of new clubs. One of them is the Architecture and Design. They made a really good case for why they needed that club, especially with the lack of anything in that engineering architectures field on college. So they had a lot of interested people, and we hope that should bring about a lot of happy faces, especially in the architecture program, to kind of get them together and get to know each other and plan their studies around those club meetings. That's pretty much all I have. It's a very short report for today. Any questions?
Thank you, Anke. I know that in the last meeting, we had another trustee, not quite as old as I am, inquire about how to make a contribution, and I found the room, I think it's 308, 309?
309, yes.
Where you can deliver a check if you'd so like. I would encourage each of the trustees who haven't contributed that would like to do so. You can come on campus and go to the Student Commons, 309?
Yes.
Eight?
Nine.
One or the other, and they'll be happy to receive your check. Any questions of it?
I'd just say, Mr. Chairman, that you didn't narrow it down at all by saying a trustee younger than you.
I said almost my age. Any comments or questions? We appreciate all the work you're doing, guys. It's terrific, and so thank you very much. All right? Thank you. College lobbyist, Mr. Carter. While he's coming up, Lindstrom, Trustee Lindstrom, are you still there? Trustee Lawson, are you still there?
I am, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Cross, are you still there? Okay, we have one out of the three that are there, so we'll keep working on that. Mr. Carter, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we near the end of the year, the, just as I said last month, the report really kind of focuses on budget preparation, and today is no different, although I have a couple of different highlights that I would like to mention to you. I would say that the budget scenario, as the state prepares to make its way through the first quarter and on through the first half of its fiscal year, is setting up for a fairly healthy surplus, not only for this fiscal year, but for next fiscal year. And I think that that's going to be ripe for a healthy debate in the State House come January next year, for either funding programs that have been underfunded over the past several years. One of the big topics will be expanded Medicaid and the conversation that occurs around it versus tax policy and potential tax cuts. It is an election year, and so with a healthy budget, that's going to provide for a very interesting and lively debate for the session. And I'll provide a little bit of a snapshot of what we think is going to happen, maybe at the December meeting, as far as other issues and topics that will occupy the time in Topeka next session. The Legislative Budget Committee met earlier this week to review not only the budget request, the increase request for higher education in Kansas, but to also answer and address the questions that were brought up as an interim committee request that were folded into the Legislative Budget Committee Agenda. And those questions I've been leaving in the Board Report for the past month or two revolve around community college budgets, mission efficiencies, and just general questions as it relates to the community college and technical college system. Dr. Sobchak and Carter File from Hutchinson Community College, as well as Ken Traska from Seward Community College, were on hand, in addition to Heather Morgan, the Executive Director for KACC, to answer institutional-specific questions, provide additional background on some of the questions that might have come up. And I'll let Dr. Sobchak provide any additional detail that he may want, but it gave us the opportunity to tell the story, address any specific issues that would impact our campus as a result of the inquiries that came about from the Legislative Budget Committee hearing. I would say that lots of times that we deal with things on a much broader scale in legislative committees that might be targeted more specifically to an institution. And so that very well could have been the case here in this particular update to that small committee. They will continue to formulate their recommendations as they develop a House, well, it's the Joint Legislative Budget Committee. They will continue to have conversations about what they believe budgets look like as they move forward. I would say that just from some of the initial conversation, and again, these were not full committees of the Senate and the House, I would say that I would not be surprised if the full $95.3 million request from the Board of Regents is not funded at that level. That's just my initial gut reaction from some of the conversation. Dr. Sobchak, you were there. I don't know if you have any additional thoughts about that or not, but-
I was going to talk about it later.
Very good. One of the things, as we move into next year, and again, this will play out in the legislature, is the fact that it is an election year. We already know from some of the either announcements of intention from candidates in Johnson County to those that have filed or have indicated that they intend to file, our delegation could look very different in 2021. There are a number of House members, currently seated House members, that have announced their intention to run for the Senate. That opens up a House district, and means someone else will be stepping in to run, whether there's a primary or whether it's just a general contest. So that doesn't guarantee a House member that decides to run for Senate that seat. Senate district is about three times the size of the House, and that is going to, that's going to provide a very interesting look come next November as to what the delegation looks like for Johnson County. That all plays into our ability to continue to have some presence in Topeka as a county, and so we'll continue to monitor what that looks like. And then finally, I mentioned that next month, I'll provide sort of a glimpse into what we think the, what people who do what I do think is going to happen in the State House come 2020. Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to attempt to answer any questions if there are some.
Have all the committees been updated? Do we know who all the various committees are, or is that announcement made in January?
So this is a carryover year, and there will be relatively little change in the committee makeup structure. Having said that, just this past week, the Speaker announced that he was going to change out a Chair of one of the rural committees and place a different legislator in there. But in general, there won't be a lot of change on that committee structure.
When will those final announcements be made? Is that in December or before the session begins? I would think they'd do that-
Yeah, well, on election years, leadership gets together and they announce that in the middle of December. If there are any changes, I would imagine they would come at some point in December or just before the legislature convenes in January.
So are you saying we could assume that whatever is listed currently is, are the committees that will go forward unless somebody passes away?
Yeah, we're not anticipating any significant change.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Carter? Any questions of Mr. Carter? Thank you. Appreciate it. And what happened to your leg?
I had a plantar fasciotomy in October, and last month was in a boot, and this month I've transitioned into a shoe, and long distances are still a little bit iffy, so.
Well, good luck. I hope that works out okay for you.
Thank you.
Faculty Association, Dr. Leiker.
I'm still on the line. It looks for-
Okay, gotcha. Lee, are you still on line?
What's happening is Lee is calling the line that's not engaged because we have a conference bridge and because he keeps calling-
And Trustee Lawson, are you still there?
I am.
Okay, so we have two of the three. Dr. Leiker, sorry. Please, proceed.
So, good evening. Dr. Harvey sends her regrets that she is unable to attend. She is in Washington, DC this week at the American Association of Community Colleges. So that group is working with the National Science Foundation to promote undergraduate science research, and she was invited to represent JCCC. As her vice president, or maybe more accurately, her understudy, she asked me to deliver the monthly FA report. So since the last time you convened, an election has occurred. On behalf of the Faculty Association, I'd like to extend a sincere congratulations to Mr. Musel, to Ms. Ingram, and welcome Laura Smith Everett, who I don't believe is here, into the JCCC community. You know, politics is more American than mom and apple pie, but it can get nasty, and this place is no exception. The college can be a contentious place. We've seen conflicts between faculty and trustees, between faculty and administrators, and sometimes even between faculty and other faculty. Some of my most cherished friends and colleagues here are people with whom I have had the most bitter of disagreements. However, we also have a culture of reconciliation, of putting aside differences in pursuit of a common good. I'm not going to suggest that the new composition of the Board or the ongoing presidential search affords the chance for a fresh start. I'm a historian, and I know that fresh starts are a myth. Everybody starts a new job or they take their first breath of air in the middle of a mess that was created by other people. Now, that's not to say we're necessarily in a mess, only that the problems which brought us here, and which you've heard explained from this podium many times, are still awaiting resolution. But I have seen some positive steps recently, which I think sends us in the right direction, and so I'd like to focus on those for a couple of minutes. Dr. Cook will talk later, I presume, about our discussion at Collegial Steering on November 5th. For those who are unaware, Collegial Steering is comprised of representatives from five groups: the Faculty Senate, Faculty Association, Educational Affairs Administration, and the Board of Trustees. We realized through our meetings this year that those five groups don't understand each other very well, so to address that, Dr. Cook proposed that the five remaining meetings of this academic year be devoted to a discussion of specific issues that those bodies are facing, with one meeting designated for each. I think everyone present reacted favorably to that idea, and we look forward to having those conversations through April. As my colleagues, Professor Schmidt and Edmonds mentioned before, this past week saw a series of town hall meetings held by the two task forces studying the issue of shared governance. Judging by the pretty amazing turnout at the Monday session, as well as the one this morning, both of which I attended, I'd say there's an awful lot of interest in this campus wide and not just from faculty. It's not up to me to provide the particulars, but suffice to say that the institutional task force proposed a statement of philosophy outlining important principles, while the group working on the academic structure proposed a new branch council that would serve as a communications nexus for various groups affiliated with instruction. Some of my colleagues have reacted- group working on the academic structure proposed a new branch council that would serve as a communications nexus for various groups affiliated with instruction. Some of my colleagues have reacted with cautious optimism, others, I would say cautious skepticism. Everyone is reacting with caution, for good reason. These discussions have only begun, and the committees have more work to do before asking faculty to vote on specific proposals or even deciding for that matter if such a vote needs to occur. I've heard a lot of good feedback from the proposals or about the proposals, but some of the reluctance I've heard concerns the future role of the Senate and of adjunct representation, which you heard before, and for that matter, of the Faculty Association, which is an independent union and how it's going to fit into this particular structure. Others, and I put myself in this category, question what effect these proposals will have without some administrative and board buy-in. Shared governance is merely a polite synonym for shared power, and without agreement as to how power will be reallocated, where is it being relinquished, where is it being gained, and of course, what corresponding changes in responsibility come along with that, what we're really left with is a theoretical abstraction. No one in the FA is interested in a toothless model that satisfies Higher Learning Commission requirements and then allows us to return back to business as usual. For that reason, I encourage Board and administration to follow the task force's work and weigh in before faculty are asked to reach consensus. All that said, I applaud the efforts of these two groups, especially their Chair Sherri Barrett and Jim Hopper. Thank you for taking us on, and we expect to hear more. I'd like to draw the trustees' attention to a splendid event last week in the COLAB hosted by the JCCC Rights Committee, "rights" as in W-R-I-T-E-S, not the other kind. Jessica Tipton, Farrell Hoijenob, Miguel Morales, and the rest of their team invited authors from the campus community to submit titles for inclusion in this booklet that honors 50 years of writing at Johnson County Community College. I brought extra copies. I'll leave them here. I hope everybody gets a chance to look at them. More than 50 authors are represented there, and it's by no means an exhaustive list, and it's not just from areas that you would expect, like English and journalism. Do take a look at it because you'll learn some things like I did. For instance, I was aware that my colleague Andrea Broomfield from English has become one of the leading, if not the leading, food historian of Kansas City. I knew this a few years ago when my next-door neighbor said, "Now, you work at JCCC, right? Do you know Dr. Broomfield?" "You do? Oh, my God, that's wonderful, because my reading club is discussing her book tomorrow night. What's she like?" So I get that a lot, actually, about our colleagues, so I was aware of that. But I was unaware that Doug Copeland has been a contributing author to textbooks in business and economics for more than 30 years and has been a frequent contributor to Kansas Business Review, which, believe it or not, I used to follow back in the early '90s. Or for that matter, that Sarah Morgan from Academic Technology Services, who installed my new computer a month ago, is also an accomplished poet. These are things I didn't know. I point them out as reminders for myself and everyone that it's easy to miss the expertise of the folks who work here. It seldom occurs to us that this tutor, or that counselor, or that engineering professor might be an expert on something we're eager to learn about, and learning comes first, right? Our work lives are defined by titles, titles like staff, adjunct, full-time professor, deans, presidents. Those classifications determine not only compensation, but decision-making authority and the amount of respect that an opinion carries. This is a large institution. Those classifications are important. I get it. That's necessary for any big bureaucracy to work. But I think the problem emerges when the titles become labels. Much of the angst that's played out in the shared governance conversation stems from the fact that people have expertise which they feel is being ignored. This is why events like the writers' reception last week are important, not only for morale, but to know which minds could be at the table when particular problems are tackled. It was good to see Trustee Lawson there, as well as Dr. Weber. Whenever senior leadership shows an interest in these things, it is highly appreciated. So, thank you. I intend to boast to Dr. Harvey that I can give shorter Board reports than her, so I'm going to stop there. What questions can I answer for you?
Dr. Leiker, thank you. Any questions or comments from the Board?
My only question would be, I would agree with you that without the Board of Trustees' buy-in, I'm not -- because I don't know where you are in the shared governance task force, and I would like to know more about when those meetings are happening and what the stages are as we go along, because I believe we're important to shared governance, and I want to make sure I understand the concerns and questions and the specific criticisms of what you call business as usual, so that we can address those that deserve addressing.
So I think the best people to address that, to answer that question, would be the folks on those task forces. So I would make contact either with Dr. Barrett or with Professor Hopper. And we can certainly alert you as to when the next round of big mass communications will be. And by the way, most of us only learned about the work of those groups this week ourselves, so we're not that much far ahead of you. Any other questions?
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Leiker, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time. Trustee Cross, are you on the phone? Johnson County Research Triangle is the next item. Trustee Cross, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Apparently, I had the wrong number. I am sorry for the problem.
No, we're glad you're there. Do you have a Research Triangle report?
Yeah, the Research Triangle met last month. I think I gave a report on it back in October. We'll meet again in April. I don't have anything else to report this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Trustee Cross. Kansas Association of Community Colleges, Trustee Lawson, do you have a report?
We are hosting the college on December 6th and 7th for the next meeting, for the Kansas Association of Community Colleges Trustee.
Is there more? Yeah, we can. Is there more?
That is the current meeting that is coming up, and their agenda, I believe, is coming out. So did you want me to post that, or do you want to put that publicly?
No, I think Terry Schlist has posted that with all of the trustees, and I think we've got that posted accordingly. So I think we're in good shape. We'll look forward to having all of the community colleges on our campus.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Foundation, Trustee Musil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Foundation would like to thank the trustees for their attendance at the 33rd Annual Sum Enchanted Evening Scholarship Gala, held at the Overland Park Convention Center earlier this month. It was an historic evening filled with memorable moments. Chair Mike and Susan Lally and Pam Pop, who served as sponsorship chair, and the entire committee did a great job for the evening. Frank Devacell was honored as Johnson Canyon of the Year, and Jake Burkhart, a JCCC student, did a great job of sharing his story. We celebrated a record more than $1 million raised in support of scholarships. And I want to recognize a few special sponsors. We had a record $50,000 or more visionary sponsors: Burlington Northern Santa Fe, Educate or Enrich and Enable Fund, the Friends of Barton P. Cohen, J.E. Dunn Construction, Midwest Trust, FCI Advisors, the Bergman Family. Over $25,000 legacy sponsors included Clay Blair Family Foundation, the Kirk Foundation, and LMC Truck, and the Rainier Family Foundation, and one sunflower sponsor at the $15,000 level, Dick &amp; Barbara Scholl. Eight $10,000 open pedal sponsors: Barton P., Mary D. Cohen, Charitable Trust, Black &amp; Beach, Larry Brewbreaker, Adam and Levon Hamilton, Lockton Companies, Mindy Campin Scholarship Fund, Sue and Louis Norman, Lewis Nerman and Olathe Health. I also want to mention that there was an outstanding tribute, and I want to thank Kate and Rob and Chris and whomever contributed to the tribute to Dr. Sobchak and his 26.5 years, which will be 27 years when he retires in June. It was an outstanding effort, and I know a significant surprise to Dr. Sobchak. It was well-deserved, and Dr. Sobchak, your comments were excellent. So thanks to everyone for the amazing support. We give away over $1 million in scholarships every year now, and we raised $1 million in this one night, so it was a very successful event. Thanks to everyone who participated. That's the end of my report.
Any questions of Trustee Musil or comments?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions, but you have a comment.
Yes.
So I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. President for such a great event, and also the Foundation. I was happy to sponsor two tables at this event and give our students an opportunity to meet so many wonderful businesses like Garmin, Black &amp; PHK, Met. It was a real opportunity to also make sure that they got introduced to a lot of our professors and educators, so that was a real great opportunity. So I had a comment for Dr. Leiker that was not something that was able to get through when I was talking, so I just want to make a comment about the shared governance is really something that I believe, and it gives us an opportunity to build trust with our faculty and adjuncts, and that is it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Trustee Lawson. Committee reports and recommendations. First is the audit. Trustee Ingram and I sit in on the audit committee. We met on November 7th with a large contingency of staff. We had a presentation of our external audit. Mr. Moyer, partner along with Mr. Robinson of the Audit Manager from Ruben Brown, presented the draft about financial statement report, of our annual financial statement report and compliance report for the year ended June 30, 2019. Mr. Moyer informed the committee that the college has received a non-modified opinion. I would point out that the audit includes financial analysis, compliance procedures, how departments work within each other in about 41 different areas with subtitles. The 42nd area was the federal compliance, which includes another 24 areas of compliance. And I was pleased to hear that the representatives of Ruben Brown really think this college is exemplary. They applauded the cooperation from all staff members and departments. They applauded the discussion that obviously takes place between and among all departments and staff and faculty, and so I really want to thank all of the staff for that very, very, very clean and glowing audit. It reaffirms that the daily operational procedures at this college are top-notch. And with that, I would ask Trustee Ingram if she has any comments.
I don't have anything to add, but those certainly would have been comments that I would have made as well. It's always good to hear the positive feedback, so it was a great meeting.
So, thank you. It is the recommendation of the Audit Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the administration's recommendation to accept the audited financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2019, and I'll make that motion.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Any comments? Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. We also had updates from Mr. McDade on in-house audit projects and reviews, including facilities, rental, athletic clubs, and student activity. Ms. McLeod presented background on higher education-specific compliance environment challenges and resource commitments. These benchmarks will be useful in comparing the college's compliance efforts with peer institutions, and again, we rank very favorably with our peer institutions. Ms. Boyd presented information related to the 2018 IT Cloud Security Audit and efforts by Information Services to implement those recommendations. Sandra Warner gave a presentation on our mission continuity and discovery/recovery strategies, and we're really in good shape in terms of where we are timeline-wise in case we should have an event hit us where we can't continue operations as normal on the campus. Audit recommendation follow-up matrix was shared by Mr. McDade. We had our quarterly report on our ethics report line between July 15th and October 30th. Nine reports were received. Three reports were received anonymously. As of October 28th, all nine reports have been reviewed. Seven of those have been appropriately addressed, and two reports are ongoing. We had the review of the Internal Audit Audit Committee Charter contained in Board Policies. This practice is consistent with the Institute of Internal Auditors International Professional Practices Framework, and as a result of this review, Audit Committee proposes no updates to the internal and external audit policy. And I would like to remind this Board again that we're blessed and privileged to have an internal audit component of our operation. Many colleges do not have that internal component, and we really appreciate the work the internal audit team does and the work that goes on. An example of that is that Information Security is in the process of putting out an RFP, and the Internal Audit Committee has been working with Mr. Pagano very closely to make sure that that RFP hits all of the key parts of what that significant audit needs to include. So we appreciate that dialogue. With that, again, I would ask Trustee Ingram if she has any additional comments.
I don't believe so. Thank you.
That concludes the Audit Committee. You have the audit schedule in your Board Packet of upcoming events, and that takes us to the Collegial Steering Report. I appreciate the comments of Beth and Irene and Jim in terms of how Collegial Steering can impact those various groups. And as Jim very well pointed out, we've charged each of those groups to bring forth to the committee issues, trends, challenges that their organization faces as they relate to the teaching and learning activity of students on this campus. And Nancy volunteered the trustees to do the first one in December, and that's coming up December 2nd, so this agenda will go out to all of the committee members next Tuesday. But we thought, and it's interesting to me that even though we sit in those committees and the Board of Trustees is represented by the Chair and Vice Chair, but that will turn over when we have new officers in January, and I have failed to realize that as the elections impact the Faculty Senate, the Faculty Association, and Educational Affairs, new people come on board, and we shouldn't always assume that the replacements are in lockstep with what's been going on. And so I believe that our decision to have each organization bring forth on an annual basis, hopefully, if that continues with the committee, as to how the challenges for those committees impact what goes on on campus. And so Beth and Irene, your comments about adjunct faculty is important and significant, and I'm not necessarily one that should wait till then to pay heed to some of those issues, but we certainly in Collegial Steering have a kind of a formal way to address those types of concerns. So what we'll present on behalf of the trustees is where do the trustees get their authority? What allows us to be trustees? And we'll specifically talk about Kansas Statute, our own code of conduct policy, and directions from the Higher Learning Commission. We'll talk about trustee responsibilities. What are we responsible for? And that area, things we've talked about will include hiring the President, supporting the President, evaluating the President, and helping the President be successful. Set policy, fiduciary responsibilities, and be an advocate for the college. Trustee constituencies. And I think it's important, while every constituency we have feels that they're the most important one, or probably should feel they're the most important one, I think trustees have to be sensitive to all their constituencies and how they represent all of the players that come to make this college what it is. And so we've listed a whole series of constituencies that we work with. And then the trustee partnerships, like KACCt, ACCt, K-12, and four-year institutions of higher education. So we'll have, we'll condense all of that into about 33 minutes and then leave some time for questions and answers and other things, but I really am looking forward to whoever our successors are on the trustees to carry through with that plan and to listen and hear how we can make this place even better. So I thank you again, speakers, for being here, and again, Nancy, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
I do not. Sounds good. We're looking forward to it.
Very good. Learning quality, Trustee Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Learning Quality Committee met on Monday, November 4th at 8:30 in this room. Minutes of the meeting are in the Packet. The main focus of that committee meeting was a sabbatical update from librarian Jessica Tipton that focused on efforts she's undergone to ensure that online students can equally utilize library resources, the same as students on campus, and she's come up with a lot of creative ideas that are being implemented more down the road, so that was informative. I have no recommendations this month, but there are affiliation agreements in the consent part of the Packet in the agenda, and that concludes my report.
Any questions of Trustee Snyder? Thank you. Management, Trustee Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Management Committee met at 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday, November 6th in the Board Room. The information related to the Management Committee meeting begins on page 9 and runs through page 26 of the Board Packet. The Management Committee received several presentations from staff. Elisa Waldman, who recently transitioned to the role of Dean of Continuing Education from the position of Director of the Kansas Small Business Development Center, gave a presentation on the work of the SBDC at Johnson County Community College. The center is funded through the Federal Small Business Administration, the Kansas Department of Commerce, and the college. Jessica Johnson, Director of Kansas Procurement Technical Assistance Center, gave an overview of activities and services provided by PTAC. These include contractor registration and certification, identifying bidding opportunities, as well as bid and proposal preparation. Randy Weber, Interim Executive Vice President for Finance and Administrative Services, presented -- information on several agreements with outside agencies. These agreements can be found in the consent agenda on pages 45 and 46 of the Board Packet. Rachel Lear, Associate Vice President, Financial Services, CFO, provided the semi-annual update on college investments in the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. She also provided recommendations for approval of the budget calendar and guidelines, including the proposed 2020-2021 tuition grades, which will be brought forward to the Management Committee at the December 4th, 2019 meeting. At this time, there are no plans to increase tuition for the next academic year. Next, she reviewed a five-year projection model of college finances. In Janelle Vogler's absence, Jim Fiker, Director of Procurement Services, presented the Single-Source Purchase Report and the summary of rewarded bids between $50,000 and $150,000. That summary can be found on page 18. Rex Hayes, Associate Vice President, Campus Services, provided a monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and this report is on page 23 of the packet. He also reported on current progress of the construction projects on campus, then reviewed the report on the financial status of facilities master plan projects. That report is in your packet on page 24. The Management Committee has the following recommendations to present this evening. The Management Committee has reviewed the recommended changes to both the donor expense reimbursement policy and the identity theft prevention policy, which were reported by Dr. Weber. The updated policies can be found in the Board Packet on pages 10 through 16. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve deletion of the donor expense reimbursement policy 216.05, and I will make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to and renumbering of the identity theft prevention policy 540.00, and I will make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
There are three recommendations based on requests for proposals or bids. The first was an RFP for the renewal of an annual contract for athletic team charter bus service. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract C18-087-00 with crossroad tours for team charter bus services for the current regular athletic season in the amount of $74,153 postseason as needed, in the amount of $69,654, and a 10% contingency for unforeseen costs in the amount of $14,381 for a current year estimated amount of $158,188, an amount of $474,564 for all season's cost for the remaining optional renewals through 2023 for a total estimated amount of $632,752, and I will make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second regarding contract for athletic charter bus. Any questions? Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next was a bid for the remodel of the Carlson Center third-floor restrooms. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid from Excel Constructors for RFB 20-017 Carlson Center third-floor restroom remodel in the amount of $167,200 with an additional 10% contingency of $16,720 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total estimated expenditure of $183,920, and I will make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions? Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Our final recommendation this evening is for the Commons Building Kitchen Hood Make-Up Air System Replacement. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid from SGI for RFB 20-025 Kitchen Hood Make-Up Air System Replacement in the Commons Building in the amount of $270,515 with an additional 10% contingency of $27,051.50 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total estimated expenditure of $297,566.50, and I will make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any questions? Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report, unless there are any other comments from my fellow trustees.
Trustee Snyder.
I have a quick question. I apologize if I didn't notice this earlier. In our Management Committee, we approved a contract for a solar canopy, and I expected to see that tonight for final approval. And maybe it doesn't need to be here. I apologize if I didn't catch that earlier, just send that over to ask. And I don't expect you, trustees, to know that.
Solar canopy question.
Yeah. Should Beth help me with that? Do we?
It's on the 50 to 150.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important, given last year at this time, this is my ninth year on the Board. Every year in the November meeting, we get a report from the Management Committee that the Management Committee has started its budget work for the following year, and that includes looking at tuition and fees and whether they should be increased or not. And last year, we did the same thing, and we gave notice of it to everybody, and then we had a dollar increase, and we had a brouhaha. So, this year, I would anticipate no brouhaha because we're not looking for a recommendation to increase. But just to make it clear to everybody that we do this every year. In November, we alert people that in December, we're going to adopt budget guidelines, which include revenue sources, tax mill levy, tuition increases, and other expenditures. So, I think it's important to understand that this process has been going on at least for nine years, and I assume it will go on in the future where we give people that type of notice. I also think it's important, Vice Chair Ingram, that all the bids we approved tonight were low bids.
Yes.
We do have a bidding and procurement process, and they resulted in low bids that met all the requirements on all of those action items. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for those comments.
Thank you, Trustee Musil. Any other comments?
I have another comment.
Trustee Lawson.
Thank you so much. So, as we are considering going into the budget process for December, I would like to, Mr. Chair, have a consideration of property valuations as well as our current reserves. I hope the budget will consider either an expanded use of the fund for educators or a no-lady rollback in our next budget. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next item is the Nominating Committee. Each year at this time, the Chair can appoint a nominating committee for officers going forward. I have asked, and Trustee Lindstrom and Trustee Snyder have both agreed to be on the nominating committee. They will come forth with recommendations for officers going forward that will take place in January, so we'll act on that in December.
Somebody need to mute their phone on their end? Would that?
Lindstrom, are you still on?
I am.
I think he's going through a traffic buzz or something.
Yes, I am still here.
Okay, good, thank you. Next item, the President's Recommendations for Action, Treasurers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board Packet at page 27 includes a Treasurers' Report for the month ended September 30th, 2019. Page 1 is our standard general post-secondary technical education fund summary. September was the third month of the college's fiscal year. We received $5.1 million in ad valorem property tax distribution from the county treasurer. That was distributed mostly to the general fund, some to the capital outlay fund, and some to the special assessment fund. Another $1.3 million in property taxes was received in October, and that will be included in next month's report. The unencumbered cash balance at the end of September was $93.6 million, which is $7.9 million less than last year at this time, and the expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. So, it's a recommendation of college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers' Report for the month ended September 30th, 2019, subject to audit and ISO move.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Trustee Musil, does that conclude your report?
I'm sorry, that concludes my report.
Monthly Report to the Board, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. I'd like to start off by pointing out the Monthly Report to the Board. This one is about almost 40 pages. It's amazing what everyone does, as every month, and we talk about this. But I do have, Dr. Weber, a quick question for you. On page, and Dr. Weber is not aware that I was going to ask him this question. Proactive of being in the seat. On page 8, there is the Success Advocate Pathways touchpoint. And usually, these lines, they kind of run parallel, but this one, this current year, just shoots up at a much higher rate of ascent. Is there anything causing that?
Well, I think that number of increased contacts for our success advocates is attributable to some of the communication strategies that we've done. We've spoken a little bit in our pathways work in the past about bringing on AccuCampus, which is a student success tool that allows us to track students' activities and connect with them. So, a lot of it has to do with their ability to track students' behaviors on campus and connect with them with some what we'll call just-in-time strategies versus wait until a student waits until it's too late, and we call it early alert, and then try to do damage control. So, proactive measures.
The success advocates have been in place now for how many years?
I think this is their fourth fall. We approved the success advocates, well, maybe fall of '17, so third fall, the first of the full-time advocates.
That's terrific. A few things, several of which have already been mentioned. I would like to talk briefly about Some Enchanted Evening, give kudos to Kate, her leadership, Rob Wirick, and Judy Riley. We talk about the million dollars in revenue commemorating Frank Devacell, who led Olathe Med for 42 years. But most importantly about all of this is the number of students that will benefit from that fundraising. So, Kate, I think we're up to about, is it 1.2 million distribution every year? And over 1,000 students?
Almost 1,500.
Almost 1,500. That's terrific. I remember in my day, we were hovering about 200. So, this is a terrific increase, and thank you for all your hard work in pulling off this event. A few other things that I've been able to do the last couple of days. On Tuesday, November 12th, Governor Laura Kelly hosted a discussion on Medicaid expansion at her own Olathe Health Education Center. I was honored to be one of about 50 people invited to participate. The invitees were leaders primarily in the local healthcare arena, hospitals, social service organizations. Because it was our building, I think that's how I got the invitation. When given the, and Laura Kelly was fantastic, it was a very vibrant discussion. But when given the opportunity to ask questions, I did ask the governor, who earlier said they were anticipating if Medicaid expansion is approved, that it would create 2,000 jobs, I guess across the state. And so, I asked her if there would be financial incentives for people wanting to get training for those jobs, and would there be financial incentives for the providers of that training, AKA Johnson County Community College? The governor replied that I was a good lobbyist, and then went on to explain the possibilities for empowering the workforce to handle the increased demand. Our staff at Olathe Med did a fantastic job pulling this off with collaboration of Olathe, Olathe Health. It was really a wonderful get-together. It's so terrific to have Johnson County Community College to host something like this. On Tuesday, November 19th, and Dick had mentioned this earlier, we had the opportunity to testify in front of the, what is it, the Higher Ed?
Legislative Budget.
Legislative Budget Committee. Heather Morgan, the CEO of KACC, did a fantastic job in testifying. Carter File, President of Hutch, and myself were there simply to provide color commentary and augment her presentation. We were then, we followed Dr. Blake Flanders from the K-BOR, who gave an overview of the budget situation for higher ed. And we were followed by Jim Ganant, who's President of Manhattan Technical College. He also did a wonderful job. The crux of the discussion focused on the different ways community and technical colleges are funded, as well as a discussion on Excel and CTE or Senate Bill 155. This provides subsidized career and technical education training to high school students taking CTE courses. The demand for this program has exploded way beyond anyone's expectations when it was introduced in 2012. It's a real success story. Yesterday, we hosted Mayor Quinton Lucas on our campus. This visit was arranged by Sue and Louis Nerman. We believe it may have been the first time in the history of our college that Kansas City's mayor visited our campus with the intent to learn more about us. The mayor was entertained by Bruce Hartman, who gave an informative tour of the Nerman, including its new exhibition, Queer Abstractions, which is opening tonight. We then gave Mayor Lucas a tour of the campus as we moved in breakneck speed toward the direction of the U-Libby Career and Technical Education Center. Dr. McLeod was a part of the group and explained to the mayor the mini-program offerings in that building. While there, the mayor visited a job fair organized by Debbie Rulo from Continuing Ed and worked the crowd. I have to say, Mayor Lucas is really a cool guy. It was just great being able to talk to him and spend some time with him. We then toured the first floor of the Student Center, and we look forward to working with the mayor to find new ways of working with his office in Kansas City. Now, I'm going to backtrack just a little bit to Monday, November 11th. The Blue Valley School District honored Johnson County Community College as one of its four 2019 Friends of Education. This is an annual award given for the district. Dr. McLeod and Dean Richard Fort joined me to accept the honor. Over the last few years, we've worked really hard to cultivate our relationships with our local or six school districts in Johnson County. I think it was in my second or third year, I visited every high school in Johnson County. We honored, we've honored all six superintendents here at trustee meetings this past year in appreciation of our close working relationship. These relationships are critical when you think of the over 4,000 high school students who take our College Now courses. And most importantly, Dr. McLeod, Dean Fort, and Dr. Weber have all joined forces to provide greater opportunities for high school students at Johnson County Community College. The initiatives underway now, and those being planned for the future, bode well for this college and county, as more and more high school students are being given the access and opportunity to benefit from what we have to offer. Before we get to this little video we're going to show, I would like to present Dr. Cook with the plaque that Blue Valley awarded us. We were deeply honored to be one of the four recipients. There you go.
Thank you, but this goes to, back to you and the entire staff and the great work you do, but wow, that's gorgeous. Thank you.
That's really nice. Okay, can we now run the video?
Last fall, we were investigating some career technical experiences for our students, and so, we approached Johnson County Community College and said, what would be the opportunity of having some of our students come to their programs at the college, and they were willing to sit down and have a conversation with us? We landed on two programs to initially start, which was our Automotive Technology and Construction Management. The partnership has been great. Our students are enrolled in both the Automotive Technology and Construction Management, and the instructors at Johnson County report that they can't tell the difference between our high school students and the students who are traditional college-age students. You know, our Board of Education has the mantra, "All means all," and we knew that in our high school programs that there were some students who needed more of the traditional career technical experiences, hands-on experiences, and we didn't have those here within our buildings. This has provided an opportunity for students to go outside of our buildings and still meet their educational needs. Johnson County Community College deserves the Friends of Education Award because they said yes immediately. They see themselves as a partner with everybody in the county, and they wanted to make this work for our students. It is my honor to congratulate Johnson County Community College for being a friend of education, and to thank you on behalf of the countless number of students who are going to benefit from the services that you provide.
That video, yes, for our. That was shown at their Board of Education meeting. It really commemorates the hard work by so many on this campus who realize the importance of working closely with our K-12 partners. So, Mr. Chair, that concludes the report.
Thank you very much. Great news, and appreciate all of the good work that goes on every day. I don't believe we have any old business, but I do have a new business item, and it's a board communication. And I'm saddened that we have to address this tonight in light of the heels of the very good news that we've heard from our auditor, we've heard from the Student Senate, we've heard from all of the things going on, the Blue Valley Award, and so on and so forth. But we received a letter, quite an extensive letter, that we sent to you as trustees. That was important for you as trustees to know. The name at the top of the letter
The name at the top of the letter was redacted, as well as the signature was redacted when we received it, but it did say from a Johnson County Community College trustee. So trustee Lindstrom, are you still on board?
I am still here, yes, sir.
Trustee Lawson, are you still there?
I am.
Trustee Lawson, are you still there?
Mr. Chair, I'm replying. Can you hear me?
Yes. Trustee Cross, are you there? Trustee Cross? So what I wanted to do tonight is to make sure you've all seen the letter. I guess the question would be, being it comes from a trustee of Johnson County Community College, and no one has signed it, that one of us wrote the letter. And there are some implications in the letter that I guess we could draw conclusions as to who that might be. I want to share a cover letter that I sent with you for the people of the audience and for our viewing, viewing audience, because I think it's important to note for them to understand what we're dealing with in terms of this extensive memo. And here's what, here's what the cover letter has said. "On October 15th, 2019, Dr. Blake Flanders, President and CEO of the Kansas Board of Regents, contacted President Sopchik to alert him of a letter that a member of Kansas Board of Regents received from a Johnson County Community College trustee. The letter outlines concerns related to the alleged lack of transparency at Johnson County Community College and the Kansas Community College system as a whole. After reviewing the document, President Sopchik asked staff to vet this letter and provide responses to these allegations. Out of concern for the amount of misstatements and untruths, President Sopchik contacted me, Jerry Cook, to alert me to the original letter and the college's response. To my knowledge, the author acted independently from all other JCC trustees and administrators in the submission of this document. It was sent to an unknown, unknown audience at this time without any of the concerns being brought first to the JCC trustees or underlying departments in question. It is also my belief that no JCC trustees were aware it had been drafted or submitted. A majority of the statements and allegations are inaccurate and could have been easily addressed through transparent conversations on our campus. As such, we have gathered impacted employees to address the concerns in writing. You will find those answers below in red, which is the document that you received. We acknowledge the issues raised below implicate a significant communication breakdown on our campus with this trustee. We will continue to work to improve that communication. The reality is, JCC continues to be dedicated to transparency wherever possible, within all levels of our institution. We benefit from outstanding management from hundreds of people who work hard every day to inspire students and strengthen our community. The allegations in this document of mismanagement and incompetency by our staff are not only inaccurate, but hurtful. Being outvoted on a governance issue during a board meeting does not justify these allegations against JCC and its employees. Being outvoted also does not equate to harassment, require a subsequent KOR, Kansas Open Meetings request, nor imply unethical behavior by those on the other side of the issue. We find it reckless to cite situations at fellow KACCt institutions across the state where this trustee is not an elected official or even a member of those communities. We would hope our fellow Kansas institutions realize these allegations are not the views of JCCC. While the submission of this document marks an unfortunate moment in the history of the JCC trustees, we embrace the opportunity to highlight not only the facts, but the wonderful students, employees, and programs that make our institution so special. Please do not hesitate, please do not hesitate to contact me personally for any further discussion, Dr. Jerry Cook, Chairman of the Board of Trustees for Johnson County Community College." I'd like to make four, four points to this issue, and then open it up for your thoughts, your concerns, and if a trustee is willing to say, yeah, I wrote the, wrote the document, that would be helpful. My first, my first concern is that we have, over the last several months, referred to our Policy 114.01 Code of Conduct, and I would just review a couple of those bullet points. "We expect our trustees to work with fellow board members in a spirit of harmony and cooperation in spite of differences of opinion that arise during vigorous debates of points of issue. Civility and mutual caring for one another and for, for the employees of the college shall guide the conduct of board members. Board members shall promote mutual respect among one, among one another and among all college employees, and shall not use their position to embarrass, intimidate, or threaten employees. Members of the Board of Trustees are leaders in the community, and their conduct is important to the college and to the community. To base personal decisions upon all available facts in each situation, to vote their honest conviction in every case, ensuayed by partisan bias of any kind, therefore to abide by and uphold the final majority decision of the board. To remember at all times that as an individual, the board member has no legal authority outside the meetings of the board, and to press on basis of this fact and engage to private, no private action that will comprise the board." That's just a few pieces of our code of ethics. I would also point out that the reference, the memo made reference to following the Higher Learning Commission. Higher Learning Commission has criteria for trustees as well, and it says establishes and follows policies and processes to ensure fair and ethical behavior on the part of its governing board. The governing board is trained and knowledgeable so that it makes information, informed decisions with respect to the institution's financial and academic policies and practices. The governing board delegates day-to-day management of the institution to the institution's administration and expects the institution's faculty to oversee academic matters. So that whole issue of board behavior and code of ethics is supported by Kansas statute, by the Higher Learning Commission, and our own code of ethics, and I feel badly that we still have a trustee that doesn't follow that code of conduct. A second point I'd like to make is that while the memo makes reference to unethical practices of the college, I think the representation in this memo is very unethical of the college, staff, faculty, foundation, administration, board of trustees, including the daily operations. Much of the information was based on simply inaccurate data, and again, if the person would have been able to visit with us about that, we could have resolved many of those differences. A third point I'd like to make is references made to proper oversight, requesting the legislature takes action to have oversight of community colleges. And, and I believe this person lacks the thorough understanding of the role of a trustee to have proper oversight. The memo talks about promoting transparency, and yet the transparency activity or lack thereof in this memo is very, very obvious. And then the fourth point I'd like to make that I think is really the bad news for this college, is that it has a very negative impact upon our elected partners, whether it's city council, county government, state legislators, and the governor's office. It has a significant negative impact on our KACCt partners. This allegation points out to other colleges that this trustee really should not have any influence or say about how those colleges operate. It really impedes our national reputation, and this will become, it has become, and is out in the nation currently, and I believe then it has serious implications for our presidential search and who will want to apply to this institution. So I apologize for this kind of bad news, but I think it has to be addressed. When you've heard all of the good news going on every month in these meetings and every day on this campus, it's, I'm embarrassed and I'm saddened that we have to have this discussion. So with that, I'll open it up to any trustee for discussion, and again, we're not taking any action tonight, but I would entertain your thoughts.
Mr. Chair, this is Dick Lindstrom. First of all, I applaud, I applaud your leadership in handling of this issue. I also feel, as you do, that it's unfortunate that it feels the way that they do. They don't bring it up to the other trustees or, or administration, but I applaud the way you handled it. Thank you.
Trustee Snyder.
Thank you. Just for the record, I did not write the letter or have any knowledge of the record until you sent it out. Two things I'm curious about. One is, do we have a good feel for how widely this letter has spread to the legislature, to Board of Regents, other community colleges, et cetera? And then the response that Dr. Sopchik provided, is that being disseminated in some, I know it was sent to the board, Kate sent it to many of our community partners, but what is our strategy going for?
Good questions. I don't think we're aware of how broad the letter has been distributed, but we do know that certain legislators are aware of it. We do know that the Kansas Board of Regents is aware of it. In terms of how broad our distribution has been, because the foundation has been implicated, because our donors who have donated to the Nerman Museum have been implicated, we have distributed to the foundation board, executive board, I think past recipients of the Johnson County of the Year have received it, community members who have been kind of implicated in the letter.
Did you mention KACCt?
Yes, and we've distributed it to KACCt. This memo points out weaknesses at two community colleges in the state, which I don't believe our trustees have the knowledge or wherewithal or commitment to make a comment about any college in the state. And so KACCt is very concerned because it says to the legislature, "We need oversight at the state level because local trustees don't have the ability to oversee their colleges."
Well, if it would be helpful if we decide to be more forceful in any communications back, I'd be happy to sign any letter with the rest of our trustees to show that this is an outlier compared to the prevailing provision.
Thank you. Trustee Musil.
I am curious, and sometimes I play lawyer on TV, but I'm really interested in not dancing around the issue. I did not write the letter. Is there a trustee participating in this meeting that wrote the letter?
I did not write the letter.
I did not write the letter.
Trustee Lindstrom says he did not write the letter, so that leaves trustee Lawson and trustee Cross. Trustee Lawson and trustee Cross, are you still there? Trustee Lawson and trustee Cross, are you still there?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Is it possible to boost email? Has this been actually verified?
So. Well, I'll go on. There are two possibilities. One is that an elected trustee in this college wrote the letter, which is of serious concern to me, both for immediate needs of the college and for future needs, particularly in the middle of a presidential search. The second possibility is that somebody forged the letter and said they were an elected trustee, which is equally dangerous, and so I think it's important that if nobody on this board wrote the letter, they need to say so tonight. If somebody did write the letter, they need to say so tonight, so then we can address it and make sure that we improve whatever communication needs to be done, so that these types of letters, making allegations of unethical conduct, breaches of fiduciary duty, bullying, refusal to allow trustees to ask questions, if those are serious and believed allegations, then this board needs to address them as a board. So I'm asking my fellow board members to confirm whether or not they wrote or had any hand in this letter.
Again, trustees Lindstrom, Snyder, Musil, Ingram, and Cook have denied writing the letter. Trustee Cross and trustee Lawson, that leaves it to you two. Trustee Cross, did you write the letter? Trustee Lawson, did you write the letter? Trustee Lawson, did you write the letter? Trustee Cross, did you write the letter?
I guess to follow up on trustee Musil's comment there, if we're, if we're dealing with a possible case of fraud, I think we need to, you know, alert the authorities and get that corrected in some fashion.
Thank you.
And I would, if, if, no, but I guess the only way to find out then is to, I would be prepared later to make a motion that the chair and the president jointly contact Blake Flanders at the Kansas Board of Regents to get an unredacted copy of the letter and a record of where, from where it was sent, because otherwise, we can't determine whether it was sent by a trustee or sent by somebody else, and all we received is a redacted one. So I think we have to know more about where this, where this came from. We, earlier this year, had an attack on Dr. Sopchik, which was anonymous, and the U.S. Postal Service did what it could do to find that, and various constituencies around the campus quickly denied they had anything to do with it, and I believe them and trust them in good faith. This is, is much more serious in terms of college governance than that, and so I, I think we simply have to further investigate it. If we can't determine within our own board who drafted it or had a hand in drafting it, then we need to take the next step.
Trustee Musil, thank you. I've indicated we will not take action tonight, so we will not take action, but I will share with you that I've tried over the years to make decisions that's in the best interest of the college, and as the chair, at least through December 31st, I'm going to do everything I can. We have ways we can find out who wrote the letter, and we will, we'll pursue those, and as we, as we determine who wrote the letter, we'll inform the Board of Trustees about that author. And so with that, I think unless you have further discussion tonight, and you will get that as soon as we, we'll work on that posthaste. This is, this is much too serious for our college and to have two trustees who won't commit one way or the other to resolve this issue. And it is a trustee issue where we need to really look at our, our training and our collaboration, but it seems kind of interesting to me that when the person criticizes the Board of Trustees to not be transparent, that they're not transparent. So with that, unless there's a final comment, I'm going to close discussion on this topic The next item is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is an item where we routinely deal with a number of items. Unless a board member has an item to be pulled off the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve. So move.
Second.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Again, thank you for attending the meeting tonight. I apologize that we had to deal with a negative issue, but it has to be dealt with. Congratulations to all of the good news and the great work going on. I just would make a final comment that, what do you call those things? Advertisements have been made for the President's search, and those are out working. AGB is receiving resumes, I'm sure, and we'll just receive resumes in November and December, and then our work begins after the first of year. A motion to adjourn.
So move.
A motion has been made in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.